So, welcome. I have 6:30. I am Barbara Lee Van Horsen, the experimenter at the Momentum Center, and I want to welcome everybody to our virtual Town Hall meeting on Resiliency and Hope. I see more people are coming in, and so I will admit, folks, as they show up in the waiting room. The waiting room is one of the features we installed for security when we had an unfortunate incident with Zoom Town Hall that was crashed. So, we'll just let people in as they show up. Really excited for our event tonight, and so glad that you're here. I want to thank our sponsors: Ottawa County, the City of Grand Haven, North Ottawa Community Health System, and Grand Haven Area Public Schools, who helped make all of this possible and help us get the word out. In a moment, we're going to hear from our amazing panelists tonight. We have Rick Miller from Kids at Hope, we have Sarah Brody from Thrive Ottawa, and Rebecca Shipper from Opportunity Thrive. Just really, really excited for this whole evening as it unfolds. I need to go over a little bit of instructions, and the first is to just welcome you and tell you about the agenda. We'll go over the instructions. We normally have polling questions, but we're going to skip that tonight, and that'll also free up a little time. We'll hear from our panelists, and then we'll have a question and answer period. So, I want you to use your chat box to enter any questions that you might have. And it's really great if you leave your video on so that we can see each other. That's kind of the whole idea of a Town Hall, that we're in community together. But keep your audio on mute unless you're talking. That'll keep feedback at a minimum. Make sure, as I said, to put your questions in the chat box. We did receive a couple of questions beforehand, and we gave those to the speakers already. When we go into the breakout sessions, you do need to have the Zoom app downloaded in order to participate in the breakouts. If you just went through the browser, you won't be able to do that. So, hopefully, everybody has the app, and then we'll report out and talk about next steps. So, just a couple of instructions. Once again, please put yourself on mute. If you're not right now, take a moment to mute yourself, and then unmute as you're asked to speak. Again, that just really helps keep down the extra noise. We do have a closed captioner here tonight, so you can select closed captioning, subtitles on or off as you prefer. Again, a reminder to put your questions or comments in the chat box. The breakouts require the Zoom app, and I also want to let you know, we're recording the event tonight, and you will get a copy of the recording. It's also being livestreamed by Fox 17, but we are not recording the small group conversations. So, I want everybody to be aware of that. When you're in your small group conversation, you don't need to worry about that being broadcast anywhere. That's a private conversation. We do everything we can to create a safe space for those conversations. As I mentioned, we're recording. We will get the recording out to you, as well as any action steps, all of the slides, any materials that are talked about. We'll put a whole packet together, a video packet, and get it out within a week of the Town Hall. So, I know we had some people who also signed up who couldn't be here, but know that they'll get that packet afterward, which is really, really nice. And finally, we're going to go over our ground rules for communicating. The first one is honesty, that we don't get together to debate who's right and who's wrong, but to have an honest conversation, sharing what we've experienced, what we feel, and being willing to listen to other people's experiences and feelings. That we're all equal, that we have presenters here to kind of set the stage for our conversation, but we're all equal and valuable contributors to the conversation. Respect. We need to realize that we all have preconceived ideas, and they can get in the way of our listening to each other. So, we want to be aware of that so that we can remain respectful to each other and to ourselves throughout the evening. We want to practice active listening. In our culture, it can be particularly easy to have our mind on a lot of other things besides what's being said, including what we'd like to say. So, we really want to challenge ourself, particularly in this virtual format, to give our attention and our listening to whoever is speaking. Responsibility. We all have hot buttons, and those can get triggered unintentionally. So, if that happens, we want to be able to name that without blaming somebody for it, owning our own emotions. And finally, it's a shame-free zone. Shame never creates change. It never leads to anything positive. So, again, we set the stage for a place of safety, for conversation that's respectful, and we can talk to each other and challenge each other without shaming each other. Yeah, if you have any problems with those communication guidelines and ground rules, this would be a good time for you to leave the meeting. And hopefully, none of you feel that that's necessary, and we'll do that. But I do like making sure that we have your opt-in and your agreement to follow those ground rules tonight. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our panelists. Each of our panelists will be speaking for 10 minutes, and then when all three of them are done, we will have our Q&amp;A period. So, think of your-- you can put your questions in the box at any time as people are talking. Our first speaker is Rick Miller. He's the founder and CEO of Kids at Hope, professor of practice and practitioner, clinical director at the Center for the Advanced Study and Practice of Hope at Arizona State University. So, very excited to hear from you, Rick, and I am going to ask you to unmute yourself and take it away.
Thank you, Barbara, and welcome, everybody. I'm thrilled to be here. I'm privileged and honored. I'm excited to share some remarkable information with you. I believe it's life-changing. I believe it adds to our sense of hopefulness and what we can do about it, and as well as our sense of resiliency and how that is established. So, as you can see on my opening slide, I show hope in the middle of all these emotional challenges and opportunities that we experience. On one side, you see pessimism and frustration and anxiety, anger and depression. On the other side, you see content and optimism, resiliency, love and happiness. And I think most of us would love to be on the left side of the screen, but often we find ourselves in the right side of the screen. And that's what I'd love to chat with you about, because I think you have a choice in life where you want to be, and sometimes we don't give ourselves credit for those choices. So, I'm going to ask to go forward to the next slide, and I want to begin with what we think our brain looks like. Now, most of us have had some type of introduction to the brain, whether we've seen it in a figure or drawing, whether we've seen a model of it, whether we've seen an MRI scan or an fMRI scan. We all have a pretty good understanding of how the brain is constructed, its architecture, its geography, and if I asked you to think about what your brain looks like, this particular imagery would come to mind. But I actually want you to think differently about what your brain looks like. And I'm going to ask for the next slide, because this is what I think your brain looks like. I think your brain looks like Parliament. I think each day your brain wakes up, and it begins a series of votes, and it has a series of arguments within those votes. It debates those, and then it basically makes a choice, and that choice is represented by your behavior. And that can change based on the number of votes a particular subject gets. Now, that subject could be everything from what you're going to eat, to whether you're going to get up early and exercise, whether you're going to maybe exercise before you go to sleep. You have part of the brain that's arguing for you not to do that, because you're tired and you'd rather do something else, and the other side of the brain is arguing for you to do that. A side of the brain is arguing for you to grab that piece of chocolate cake, or apple pie, or pumpkin pie that was left over from Thanksgiving. Another side of the brain is arguing, let's leave that one alone for right now. Maybe we should grab an apple, an orange, or a stick of celery instead. So, your brain really, in my mind's eye, looks like this. It's an argument often happening, debating, and then voting. This takes us to our next slide. And this is the other vision I have as to if we entered, somebody's brain would see a series of voting booths. And in those voting booths, we can make a choice whether we're going to vote for hope that day and celebrate our choice, whether we're going to vote for hopelessness and live in that condition for the day, or for the week, or for the month, or possibly even longer, or we're going to vote whether we're optimistic or pessimistic for the day. But recognizing those choices are given to us each and every day is the conscious awareness of what we're voting for and why we're voting the way we are. And if we can take responsibility for those votes, then we can take responsibility for the behavior that's associated with it. So, here you have a choice of votes, and the question would be, which one are you going to vote for? Because often, we vote for the wrong candidate in this regard, and we go through the day hopeless, or we go through the day pessimistic, or we go through the day with a sense of anger or frustration or angst or what have you. We know what the full range of those emotions can be. So, ask for the next slide. So, I want to talk just briefly about these choices we make every day and talk about the difference between being a pessimist, an optimist, and someone hopeful, and give you a definition. So, you can actually have a metrics to determine what are you and why are you choosing to be that which you are. A pessimist is someone who takes things very personally. It's the woe-is-me person. A pessimist is also someone that identifies issues as being pervasive. They happen in all parts of these life. These things always happen to me. I always get in the wrong line. I always get this bad message. I always-- and you hear the "always" being represented time and time again. And pessimists always see things permanent. This will always happen to me. Not always in a pervasive sense, just in a time sense. It just doesn't ever get better. These are permanent things that affect my each and every day, and I will-- you will hear me complain about that, because I'm overwhelmed by the permanency of the issues. The optimist sees things differently, and we know that. An optimist takes things impersonal. They happen to me. They happen to other people. They see things as isolated. Yeah, I got into the wrong line this time, or I couldn't find a decent parking space, or this thing happened, or the other thing happened, but it only happens in an isolated way, and they're temporary. This too shall pass. And you feel that sense of energy when you're optimistic, that you're not burdened by it. Sometimes you're actually challenged by it, knowing that it will pass. So, we know we've often talked about the optimist and the pessimist, but we've never talked about the hopeful person, because hopefulness brings a whole other set of energy and strategy in our lives. And a hopeful person is someone who's mindful of why they act the way they do. They're able to manage their emotions and therefore their behaviors, and they always seem to be working towards something of achievement. And based on that criteria, you can pretty much self-identify yourself of whether you're a pessimist, an optimist, or a hopeful person. Next slide, please. So, the classic proverb of an optimist is someone who sees the glass half-full. And opposite of that, of a pessimist, the definition of someone who sees the glass half-empty. I'm going to show you another way of looking at this proverb. A hopeful person knows they can fill the glass. When you're hopeful is different than when you're optimistic. Optimism is a way of looking at the world, but not having to do anything about it. Pessimism is sometimes looking at the world and actually not having to do anything about it. But being a hopeful person requires you to act in accordance with your goals, and I want to talk a little bit about how that actually happens. Next slide, please. So, if we had a powerful enough microscope, metaphorically speaking, you know, in 1950, what, '52, Crick and Watson discovered the double helix of DNA, which transformed our understanding of the human genome, and therefore of life in general. I believe if we had a powerful enough microscope, we would see a triple helix, and hope would come into focus as having three elements, three constructs. One is hope has goals, hope has pathways, and hope has agency. To be a hopeful person, you need to have all three. If you only have goals without pathways to those goals, and agency representing the energy necessary to pursue those goals, if you're missing any one of those elements, you are not a hopeful person. You may be an optimistic person, maybe a wishful person, maybe a positive person, but you're not a hopeful person, because hope contains those three elements. Next slide, please. So, this one I like to take a lot of time on about. I don't have it, but just think of your life on a ladder with 10 rungs. The highest rung is the best life you can live, and the lowest rung is the worst life you can live. And then think about which rung you're on today, and then think about which rung you'll be on in one to three years. If you see yourself on a higher rung, you're probably a hopeful person. If you're seeing yourself on a lower rung, you're probably struggling with the concept or construct of hope. And if you see yourself on the same rung, you're probably just stuck in life, and somebody has to help you redefine your goals, the pathways or strategies to those goals, and the energy necessary to achieve those goals. You need all three. Next slide, please. So, I'm not going to speak a lot about resiliency, because I don't have a lot of time, but I do know one of the other speakers, I think Rebecca's going to be talking about it, and I just want you to know that there's a difference between resiliency and hopefulness. Resiliency is able to take a body punch and bounce back up, getting ready, and hope is the action necessary to go from surviving setbacks emotionally, physically, socially, intellectually, or economically, and then coming up with a strategy to thrive beyond the setback, beyond the trauma. Next slide, please. So, make the choices, and my suggestion is choose hope. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Rick. Please, everybody, take time to go to the chat box, enter comments, enter questions that you have for Rick right there, and then we'll come back to those questions. Right now, we'll move on to Sarah. So, Sarah is from Thrive Ottawa, and if you want to unmute yourself and take it from here.
Thank you very much, Barbara. I'm Sarah Brody. I both live and work in Ottawa County, where I've been an attorney and apparently is on working with families to help them build their resilience and become healthier and stronger. I'm also a part of Thrive Ottawa, as Barbara mentioned. This is an organization in Ottawa County that works collaboratively to educate people throughout the county about adverse childhood experiences and the power of resilience. For the next 10 minutes, I'll be talking to you about resilience, giving you a brief overview of what it is, what it is not, and providing some concrete steps you can take to increase resilience in your life and that of the children in your life as well. Resilience is the process of adapting well in the face of adversity, trauma, threats, and significant sources of stress, things like family and relationship problems, serious health problems like a pandemic, or workplace and financial stressors. It is also the ability to bounce back and to grow from difficulty, and this is something that Rick alluded to in his presentation. What resilience is not. It isn't a personality trait that only some people are born with. Resilience is actually something you can learn and grow in your own life. It involves behaviors, thoughts, and actions that anyone can learn and develop. One example of resilience is if you think back to the 9/11 attacks, response of many people to the attacks, of gathering together as a community and a state and working to rebuild their lives along with the lives of their neighbors. We aren't born knowing how to be resilient and how to contribute to our community, but we develop that ability along the way. It's also important to note that resilience is absolutely not getting over your past. It doesn't mean that your past doesn't affect you. Instead, resilience is adapting to your circumstances so you can accept them, you can learn from them, and you can use them in the future to help yourself and others. So, now we'll move on to some factors in building your resilience. We're going to talk through four factors to address when you're trying to build and strengthen your resilience. These factors include your social connections, self-care, finding your purpose, and incorporating healthy thinking. We're going to address each of these factors in the following slides. The first factor to consider when working to increase your resilience is your social connections. You don't need a huge social network to have viable social connections that can help you be more resilient. The key, instead, is to nurture relationships with positive and compassionate people. These are the people in your life who accept your vulnerability and your pain when the going gets tough. They listen well. They accept your emotional and physical boundaries, and they share their thoughts with you. You can count on them. Relationships based on trust give you purpose and meaning, and they increase your happiness. Work to foster different relationships in your life in order to have and give different types of support. You want to have someone who listens to you, who will check in on you, and this is the person or people that you can call at 2:00 a.m., and you know they'll pick up. You also want to have social connections where you can reach out for practical help. This would be the person who's willing to run your errands for you, or help you with yard work, or, as a classic example, help you with that big move. You also want to have relationships with people who are willing to share their information and the knowledge with you. These are people who will talk to you about the difficulty of certain medical procedures, or they know how much a divorce costs, and they're willing to talk through that information with you. The next factor we're going to address that helps increase your resilience is self-care. It's important to know that self-care often gets a bad rap. When people hear the term self-care, they sometimes think it means expensive massages, or pedicures, or doing yoga on a beach in a very expensive trendy class. And these do absolutely count as self-care. But there are different ways we can care for ourselves in order to increase our resilience. The first type of self-care is physical self-care. Important ways to care for yourself physically include nutritionally, eating a variety of mostly healthy foods, and also treating yourself, getting enough sleep, and knowing what your body needs in terms of sleep, incorporating regular movement and exercise into your days, and making sure you drink enough fluids to stay hydrated. The second form of self-care to address is your emotional and mental self-care. You care for yourself emotionally when you practice mindfulness, which is consciously staying in each moment and noticing when your thoughts start to drift to the past or the future. When you practice meditation or prayer, connecting with something greater than yourself, when you work at cultivating gratitude for the people, things, and events in your life, and when you work toward becoming more emotionally fluid. And what I mean by emotionally fluent is having that ability to recognize and allow your emotions. You allow yourself to feel them and acknowledge them without allowing them to control you or the actions that you take. Third factor that you can address in order to increase resilience is working to find your purpose. Knowing your purpose in life gives you a sense of direction, something toward which you're continually working and aspiring. You do this by choosing to be involved in your community and helping others. What skills or talents do you have that other people need? What organizations can you join in order to make a positive difference in your community and other people's lives? Giving back to other people helps fill the sense of purpose and gratitude in your life. You'll also find your purpose through setting and achieving goals. Be proactive in setting reasonable goals, not talking, "I'm going to lose 25 pounds in two weeks," but things that you can actually work toward and achieve. Do things regularly to move toward achieving them. Ask yourself each day, "What is one thing I can do today to move in the direction I want to go?" The fourth factor to address when you're building your resilience is fostering healthy thinking. How you think plays a significant role in how you feel, and how resilient you are when faced with tough obstacles. While there are many ways to address unhelpful thinking and to increase healthy thinking, here are a couple of suggestions. Look for unhealthy thinking patterns, things like catastrophizing, having a mental filter that filters out the positive and only focuses on the negative. Or predicting. Instead, recognize that you cannot predict the future. We heard Rick refer to some of these patterns when he noted that a pessimist thinks that bad things always happen to them. That is definitely an unhealthy pattern of thinking. Move toward acceptance of the things that you can't control. Change, fortunately or unfortunately, is a part of life. Recognize what you can and cannot change. A favorite quote or line about change is from Maya Angelou, "If you don't like something, change it. If you can't change it, change your attitude." Finally, learn from the past. What worked well for you in times of past distress, what didn't? A final path towards greater resilience is recognizing when you need to seek professional help. There are times of stress and hardship that are so difficult, so painful, that you don't have the ability to move through them of your own accord. Recognize that there is no shame, and instead, only beauty and seeking professional help. Finally, a note on building resilience in children. Studies have consistently shown that the single most common factor for kids who end up with greater resilience and more positive outcomes is the support of at least one stable and committed relationship with an adult. It can be a parent, a caregiver, a coach, a teacher, just one adult who cares about and provides unconditional support for that child. Children can start developing resilience at any age. It is never too late to start. Involve them in their community. Establish family traditions. Encourage them to identify how they're feeling, and allow them to express those emotions, and always listen to them. Another way to increase resilience in children is by providing positive childhood experiences. A positive childhood experience is defined as feeling safe in our families, to talk about emotions and things that are hard, and feeling supported during hard times. I realize I'm running short on time, so I'm just going to have Barbara click through each of the seven positive childhood experiences, so you can read those on the slide. These positive childhood experiences are the things that help children learn to trust others, even when life is uncertain, difficult, or frightening. These experiences happen when you're willing to talk honestly about things that are scary, embarrassing, or painful. When adults are willing to have these conversations with the kids in their lives, the result is that children feel reassured that they are not alone in their struggles, and they are better able to find meaning and purpose in their struggles. So, that's just been a very quick brief overview of how to work to build resilience in your life. It can feel a little haphazard trying to figure out which of these factors to address first, but remember, no attempt you ever make to build or increase your resilience is wasted. Try everything, keep at it, and you will find that you're better able to bounce back from these tough times. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you so much, Sarah. Again, another really, really wonderful presentation. Please put your questions to Sarah in the chat box. So, we have Rick and Sarah, and you can direct your questions to all the panelists. If you want a specific panelist to answer it, just note their name. And we're going to listen to our third panelist. Now, Rebecca is online, but she's having some internet concerns. So, we're going to give this a shot, and she has a willing partner to jump in if her internet doesn't cooperate. So, we will start with you, Rebecca, and see how it goes. Rebecca is the executive director of Opportunity Thrive. So, welcome.
Thank you, Barbara. Hopefully, you are able to hear me. My internet has been a little bit-- has been a little bit difficult here, as I am actually in a retreat center right now myself, and just kind of being able to take a break and enjoy some time away. Again, my name's Rebecca Skipper, and our work is working with educators-- Again, my name is Rebecca Skipper and our work is working with educators. That's my background, is working with educators, helping them really figure out how to be that resilient adult for our kids. Some of you may not know, but burnout in education is one of the highest levels of burnout in any of the helping professions in our country. And so as we think about this, one of the things that I wanted us to really think about is where are you on this spectrum right now? Right? Are you in that thriving category where you can say, I've got this? Are you in that surviving category where you would say, you know what, something just doesn't feel quite right right now? Or are you in this struggling space where I just feel like I can't quite keep up, right? Or are you in crisis where you just feel like I can't survive this? And these categories are really important for us as we think about resiliency, hope, all of these different spaces that we are able to name it for ourselves. Where are you right now in the midst of this time? Right? As we've, as we kind of talked about, actually before we even got started here, one of our panelists was talking about this time of COVID and all of the Zoom calls that we've been in the midst of and talking about COVID. And we know that this time in particular, right, where the pandemic, where we found ourselves isolated from our normal relationships, where we have been disconnected from our normal routines, that we feel a bit like maybe some of us are just in this space of surviving. And yet we also know that there are many of our kids, especially our adolescents, who are in crisis space right now. Right here in the Holland area in Zealand, we just lost a student to suicide, right? Who was in crisis. And I know in my work in particular, that I feel really strongly that if there are no other resilient adults in a kid's life, it has to be their teachers, right? That the teachers need to be able to step in and be that space of hope, that, that stable, connected relationship with our students. We need that relationship. And my hope is, is that working with teachers, that we can get to our kids to that thriving space. But also most importantly, as I work with teachers, we want to think about thriving for them as well. And that's really the message that I want to bring tonight is how do we individually get to that thriving space? Right? So we know that some of our panelists have talked about hope, we've talked about resiliency. And Barbara, if you'll go to the next slide for me, we know that when we talk about resiliency, the definition of resiliency is this ability to achieve positive outcomes mentally, emotionally, socially, spiritually, despite adversity. Right? This ability to overcome. And when I look about at resiliency, I think about resilience as growth, not stagnation in spite of or because of adversity. So some of us might think of resilience as just this space of surviving, right? Getting back to status quo. But what we want to look at is resilience as the space of growth, the space of sort of overcoming and continuing to grow through it. So some of us maybe are able to understand that some of our greatest moments of overcoming adversity, maybe some of our biggest challenges in our life, we've learned the most about ourselves, right? We can say, oh yeah, that was a period of growth for me. Maybe you're able to look back and think about college or even high school and say, yeah, those were really challenging times for me, but I grew a lot as a person. And that's really what we want to talk about when we talk about resilience. How do we continue to grow and move forward in the midst of this? So Barbara, if you go to the next slide for me, we want to talk about and think about resilience then, and actually you can skip this one too and just keep moving to the next one for me. We want to think about resilience actually in two as an individual and resilience as a community. I think that we talk about resilience as an individual quite often, right? We talk about self-care, we talk about having sort of attitude shifts and moving in a direction individually. And again, I'm so sorry if my internet cuts out and I freeze, but hopefully you'll be able to hear my words. But as an individual, those are really important things for us to do, to take care of ourselves, to shift and, and focus our attitude in a positive direction, right? To think about hope, to think about these ways that we can reframe. One of the, the words that we use a lot in sort of this positive psychology and also in therapy is this idea of positive reappraisal. So this idea that we can take a difficult negative situation and we can reframe it for ourselves and think about it in a new way, right? And as individuals, when we think about resilience, we want to really think, think about those skills as well. But we cannot think about resilience without thinking about it from a communal standpoint. And for me, the communal piece is, is as important, if not more important than individual work. Right? There are some researchers out there who have kind of become big names right now recently because of a recent podcast that they did with Brene Brown, but the Nagoski Twins. And they talk about how the cure for burnout can't be just self-care, that it has to be all of us caring for each other, that self-care is the fallout shelter in the basement when all else fails, right? This sense for us that when the community fails, that's when we have to lean into those individual self-care tendencies. And maybe right now we can say the community maybe has failed us. We can look at it from a political standpoint. We are more fragmented than we've ever been in some ways, although I know that there are individuals who've lived longer than me who can point to times historically when we've been as fragmented as now, but we are fragmented politically right now. The pandemic has caused us also to be isolated from one another. And so maybe it feels like the community also has given up on us and which is why we have to come back to these individual skills. But my hope is that we can always come back to the community, that the community, when working strong, can be a vessel of resilience for all of us. When I think about this within our schools, I think about the community as the staff body and the larger body of the community of the school. But for us, when we think about it in our context, we have to think about what are our communities? Maybe it's our family, maybe it's our churches, maybe it's our neighborhoods, maybe it's our, right, the, the communities that we belong to outside of this. But how strong, how much can you depend on that community for resilience? Barbara, if you'll go to the next slide for me. So then when we think about this from the standpoint of what does it mean to be resilient people? The research really shows that resilient people have sort of three core things in common. Number one, they have a staunch acceptance of reality. In other words, they don't shy away from the difficult emotions. They don't shy away from the spaces that feel uncomfortable for them. How many of us maybe grew up with emotions that were good and emotions that were bad? It was good to be happy and joyful. It was not okay to be sad. But you see resilient people don't categorize emotions like that, emotions, all emotions live in our body. And so emotions need to be processed in our body. And resilient people have this staunch acceptance that, yeah, this is what I'm feeling right now. This is what I'm experiencing right now. Right? We don't try to put on the fake facade of happiness when we're not feeling happy. We say, I'm sad right now. But here's the good news is that resilient individuals also have a deep belief that life is meaningful. And therefore, just because I'm feeling sad right now does not mean I'm going to always feel sad because life has meaning. There is something important and purposeful for me that I need to experience in my life right now. And the third thing that resilient individuals have is an uncanny ability to improvise. When hard things come our way as resilient individuals, we know how to move through them, don't we? We know what we need in that moment. This is an important one for me when I talk about it with teachers because I can tell you, number one, that teachers have an uncanny ability to improvise. If you've ever walked into a classroom and watched a teacher teach, then you know that teachers are able to improvise just like that. And so as we think about these three categories of what resilient people have, we need to then name that these are the skills, the seven skills that resilient people are, that they embody, that they practice, that they utilize on a daily basis. So as Rick maybe said, that this idea of hope that kind of comes in and this idea of what's on the left side of the screen versus what's on the right side of the screen, right? We know that those are things that we want to live into. But as the research really shows, one of the things that we need to practice for ourselves as we think about the skills that resilient people have. Number one, they're self-compassionate. And this is a big one for me because all of us, I think, tend to be our biggest critics, don't we? We tend to sort of analyze and think about and judge our own actions and our own selves. And so practices that embody and push us towards being more self-compassionate are really important. Number two, they're empathic. They're able to see what other people are experiencing and move into those lives in such a way that doesn't cross the boundary between me and them, right? In other words, I'm not taking on other people's burdens or other people's lives, but I'm able to see and experience and empathize with what they're going through. Number three, they're vulnerable. They're able to share their deep personal beings with other people. They're not afraid of sort of taking on and trying to sort of create this fake facade around who they are. And then the fourth one is they're courageous. They take on new challenges. They move into hard and to different spaces. One of the ways that we practice courage is having difficult conversations. And having difficult conversations, I think is so important for all of us. How many of us shy away from difficult conversations and sort of leave things on the table and we need to move in with courage? Number five, they're emotionally aware. They're able to see other people's emotions and move into those emotional spaces. And then number six, they're collaborative. They're willing to work with other people. They want to work with other people. They realize that their skills are limited and that they need other people to feed into them. And then the seventh one is they're cognitively flexible. I just think that as we think about this in our, in our mindsets and being able to be flexible in this time-space is really important, isn't it? As sort of time requirements are shifted on us, right? Remember when we started COVID, we thought it was going to be two weeks. Isn't that funny to think about right now? And now we sort of are in this space where it seems unending. And cognitive flexibility allows us to constantly reframe and learn in the midst of that space. So my encouragement to you is that no matter one of those four quadrants that you are in or you find yourself in, hopefully you can say to yourself, okay, if these are the three things that resilient people have and these are the skills that resilient people are able to live into, how can I practice these on a daily basis? So thank you so much. Thanks Barbara for allowing me to participate. And hopefully my internet was able to hang on just long enough.
Thank you Rebecca. I am, I'm so grateful that your internet held out. Wonderful to have you present, all three of you, Rick, Sarah, Rebecca, really, really such important information. I'm going to ask Jenna now about questions that might have been added to the chat. Jenna, are there questions for our speakers?
There are. The first one is for Rick. Are there any special resources a community needs to enhance the culture of hope among its citizens, including children, youth and families? I think you're on mute still.
Yeah.
I think, thank you for the question. I think the greatest, the greatest resource is, is ourselves. I take it from the perspective of, you always hear the, the expression, it takes the village to raise and educate a child. What you never hear people add to that is what does the village do to actually raise and educate a child? And I believe what the village does to raise an educated child is it creates the belief system that believes that every one of those child is worth investing in. Now, if you were to measure it, and that's what we do at our Hope Center at ASU, if you were to measure people's beliefs in kids, they will come back and tell you, they believe that some kids will do very well, some kids will struggle and some kids will fall through the cracks. If that is the undergrid to the belief system of a community, which in most cases it is, then you shouldn't be surprised at the self-fulfilling prophecy. Some kids do well, some kids struggle and some kids fall through the cracks. So you have to first and foremost, change the belief system. You have to give people information why it's valuable for kids to believe. And I'm going to make this short because that's such a rich question that really doesn't deserve a short answer. But I, I want, I want to at least give it a, a soundbite for the questionnaire to be able to, to maybe pursue additional insights around this concept. And that, that being is recognizing the beliefs of the adults who surround kids. Do they truly believe all kids can succeed? Secondly, I think we've heard from all the speakers, a key component of this is, is the connect, what we call the connect. Making sure kids are connected in meaningful and sustainable ways with caring adults, recognizing this factor. One size does not fit all. One size does not fit all, so you have to dissect the type of relationship that a kid may need from you. Not all kids need the same type of relationship, so we try not to generalize that. But the generalization that kids need meaningful, sustainable relationship, caring adult is in fact a good one to start with. Our research actually takes it further. And the third one is this concept of mental time travel, or what we would call chronostasia. The ability for the brain to see something better than what is today and have the ability to achieve that. Creating a culture around three themes, not 10 themes, not 20 themes, not 30 themes, not a longer list, but simply that they don't have to go to a workbook to understand what it is they're trying to do. What the village needs to do is three things, believe in its kids, connect with its kids and teach its kids to time travel. Then once you get that piece in place, the rest of it will fall in place accordingly because you need more than that. But in the absence of those three things, nothing else really works.
Thank you for that. This question is for all of the panelists. What is one action or a next step we can take to foster resiliency and hope in our communities? And we can just go in the same order that you all spoke.
Well, I'm going to reverse the order if I may Jenna, because I just had an opportunity to be on the soapbox. So if we can reverse it, I'll be the last of that speaker and let somebody else have, have the microphone for a second.
I'll go ahead and go then. The question was what one step can we take? Is that correct? I think when you're talking as a community, I think that I had to narrow it down to one thing. It would be those social connections. It would be reaching out to each other outside of ourselves, recognizing that everyone's experience with this pandemic is different. Something that is a capital T trauma to someone may only be a little T trauma to someone else. We have, as someone mentioned, a lot of political division. We have religious division. We have divisions over whether we should be wearing masks and social distancing. If as a community, we can reach across all of those divisions, recognize the need of the human beings that we're reaching out to, I think that we can do a lot to really help strengthen resilience. It just normalizes our experience of what's going on to have someone say, yeah, I get that. That's a really hard situation and I'm sorry you're struggling. Can I listen? So I would, I would focus on the social connections and just reaching out outside of ourselves.
Yeah, amen Sarah. I think that's a huge piece right now is to, to reach out and to connect. I also think that one of the first steps in reaching out and connecting and being able to empathize with other people is to first have that self-compassion for yourself. I once heard it said, and I, I cannot remember where it's from. The, the idea is that we judge other people around the things that we are judging ourselves on. And, and so when we sort of look outward and we begin to sort of judge other people, it tends to be around those ideas and those concepts that we're actually judging ourselves on. So if we can lean in and practice some of the skills around self-compassion, I really think that those are hugely needed right now. I really think that those are hugely needed right now. Are we expecting too much from ourselves? Are we expecting the impossible from ourselves right now? And, and how do we hold ourselves with a little bit more kindness and gentleness? And when we actually dig into the idea of self compassion, there's this also this space around it that understands and recognizes that what is won't always be. And so therefore, just because we're living in this moment of sort of isolation or conflict or tension doesn't mean it'll always be that way. And so if we can kind of take on that perspective as well, it will sort of allow us to sort of live into and open ourselves up to the possibility of being more compassionate to other people as well.
I, I couldn't agree more in what both Sarah and Rebecca are, are stating. I want to just amplify that for, for a moment. And say in, in every pandemic, epidemic, world war, Holocaust, recession, depression, hurricane, tornadoes, tsunamis, you name the calamity. We've had them through the history of humankind. And the people who survive and thrive under those conditions are those who are resilient and hopeful people. Now, we can talk all day about slicing and dicing the definitions of resiliency, hope, optimism, self efficacy. I mean, the list goes on and everyone has a piece of that understanding. But you look at the people who, who actually overcome. And, and again, when the things were guaranteed in life, there's going to be calamity. And one of the guarantees is some people are going to survive that calamity and go on to thrive. And some are going to be beaten back. And I think the conversation we're having today is to better understand what is it that the people that are over, able to overcome these setbacks have that the people who weren't able to overcome the setbacks don't have. And what we're trying to do is understand those. I think you have a, a good list that has been offered by Sarah and Rebecca and myself and, and see the potential and possibilities of, of that and work towards it. Recognizing this, I think, for a fact. You really don't know how resilient you are until you face a setback. Until, until you face that trauma. So we do everything we can economically for a setback. We do everything we can physically for a setback, our diets, our eating habits, our exercise. So, so we, we build resiliency physically, we rebuild resiliency economically. And then when the setback happens, we know how resilient we are because we've done the things on the front end that allow us to bounce back and thrive as we go forward. Learning those lessons from each other is, is, and they're there to, to learn. But learning them and practicing them are often two different things.
Thank you all for those responses. The next question has multiple parts to it, so I will maybe do one part at a time. So many of us have lost quality relationships, friends and or families due to the fragmented aspect of our society and how it reminds us, reminds us of how fragile we and democracy is in our country. How do we start? So this is part one. How do we start to heal through hope and building resilience? This is for any of you who would like to answer.
I can start. I think the first. Okay, I can start. Hopefully my internet is okay here. I, I would say the first thing in, in recognizing, I think especially within this political climate and resiliency is to be vulnerable enough to recognize that you maybe don't know all of the answers. And I think that's a hard one. I know that's especially hard for me. I like to think that I, I know everything and I can lean into, you know, every, I have all of the answers and all of the research and I've, I've put all my ducks in a row. But I think a lot of us have lost, lost relationships because one of us or both of us have assumed that we know the right answer. And, and humanity and, and resiliency, we have to understand that with flexibility comes the possibility that we are not always right. And if we can hold that with some fragility in that space and, and lean into that moment, I think it can be really helpful for us with some relationships. I, I also think that there is going to be a very large need moving forward of whatever you want to call it, whether it's forgiveness or grace or healing. But there's going to be this space where we have to do this. And that actually is a very open handed sort of posture. We sort of think about healing and forgiveness and grace sort of coming towards us. But that's, it's actually a very open handed posture where we have to offer it first. And that's can be a really hard thing to do, I think, in this, in this time is to be able to offer that first without expecting it to come back to us. So that's relationally, I don't know if that answered that first part of the question, but that's what I would say as we sort of think about this right now in the first steps.
I would echo what Rebecca was saying. I think that psychological flexibility is going to be a big part of people coming back together and rebuilding relationships. We have a lot of people, a lot of leaders in our country that are encouraging us to really vilify those who hold opposite views of us, whether it's politically, socially, religiously, you name it. We're being encouraged to really form into separate camps. And so I think it takes a lot of psychological flexibility to step back from that and say, okay, yes, I may, well, I may be a member of this political party or this faith. However, I still recognize that you have humanity and you have beauty by virtue of being an individual person, despite what I may think of your political views and your social views. And so I, I think that just remembering the humanity of everyone you come across is an important part of that. And I also think gratitude plays a role here. Because when we remember to be grateful for the people that come in our lives, when we really dig down and let's say you have a very difficult uncle in the family. I think most everybody has a difficult uncle or relative in their family. When you have to dig down and think about some aspect of that person that you enjoy, you appreciate, that is an excellent practice in developing gratitude. And that can really help heal relationships. And you can say to that difficult uncle, you know what? I so enjoy your sense of humor. You never fail to make me laugh and I look forward to seeing you for that reason. That's an excellent first step towards reconciliation.
So I think the, the, the question strikes me in terms of the fragmentation theme in that. And, and again, I don't think any of us could argue that we're, we're certainly not fragmented. We've come through a very challenging time socially, health wise, politically, obviously. And things are changing at warp speed in terms of technology and knowledge and things that were unimaginable, you know, a few decades ago. So we, we, we become, we, we do feel isolated. I, I would, I would approach it from what we value. And I think what Rebecca and, and Sarah and I are talking about valuing are kind of the humanity of who we are. But let me give you a, an example of how that may not play out in our larger society. And think about the largest institution in our society, everyone benefits from directly and indirectly. And that's education. And if you walk onto any school campus and ask any students this number one question, who are the smart kids in your school? What metrics will they use to define what's smart is? Will be the kids who are the most compassionate? The most gracious? The most empathetic? Or would be the kids who got the best scores on their math and science tests? Because I think disproportionately, that's where we put our values. Is on, is on those academic skill sets, not necessarily those emotional or moral skill sets. And this is very personal for me, so I'll say it personally, not necessarily professionally. I don't think we need enough more engineers to make our world better. I think we need more Mother Teresa's to make our world better. And if you can imagine a world where there are more Mother Teresa's than there are engineers, I think you can see a different world than what we have. So I think it's a question of what we value and how we recognize people that we've identified that have those skill sets and representation, soulful representations of who they are. And I think if we could get to that point, I know one of the workshops I do, I, I, I define smart as what the world needs and you have. That is not necessarily how, how my university defines smart. And I would suggest that probably not how any of your schools define smart. And often when we get that report card or that test score, it, it represents who we, who the, the society, how the society values us. And I think we've, we've lost sight of how the society should, should in fact value us.
Thank you for those answers. So we are running a little bit short on time and we need to get to our breakout rooms. So we will send the rest of the questions out to the panelists for them to answer. And then we will send out the information with our packet on, that we send out after the meeting.
Hey Barbara, when they send out questions for us to answer, can there be multiple choice? We just answer. So much easier.
Yes, you can just answer none of the above. Yes, we will send those questions out right as soon as the town hall is, is done. We'll get those replies and then we'll, we'll include those replies in the packet that we send out to everybody. We are going to go into our breakout rooms. And right now we have, I'm expecting about four people in a room. Now, sometimes we lose some people and so there might be some really small groups, in which case I'll reassign you. Really grateful for the facilitators that have volunteered. We might not end up needing all of the facilitators. So it'll just be a matter of shuffling. Unfortunately, there's no algorithm to know how to, to do this perfectly. So if you find yourself just with another person or two, don't be surprised to get yanked out and sent somewhere else. The first question that we want you to talk among yourself is what have you learned tonight? And how is that knowledge helpful? And you'll have six minutes, five minutes, you'll have five minutes to talk about that question. I'm going to send you to your rooms now. You'll get a notice to click on the room. And I look forward to having you back after answering all of the breakout questions. All right, are we all back? Thank you very much. I do, I did notice that there were, there was a room where there were a couple of people assigned and that they didn't join. So that ended up being a small group and I wish I'd moved a couple of people into it. So, but I hope the conversation was very rich. And that's what we want to do now is just kind of a quick reporting out from each of the groups. If there was an aha or a great idea or a theme, we don't want to take a whole lot of time because we need to be wrapping up. But let's start with a group two. Sandy, that was your group unless one of the other facilitators jumped in. I know Holly and Mary Jane were also in that group.
It helps when you unmute.
There you go. Hi Sandy.
Boy, we had a really rich conversation. Everybody was just so thoughtful in the responses. I think on, on number one, I think that it was interesting to have the, the term time travel mentioned, but some people talked about breaking it down, what, what do we learn tonight? And breaking it, hope down into believing, connecting and time traveling, especially with our kids. And, and I think I'm going to kind of, I guess articulate this in, in my terms. And I think that this is what we really talked about was really changing our belief system to all children can succeed with no exceptions. And that's how we can move forward. And that's something that we had a lot of thoughtful discussion around. Do you want me to go on to number two or not?
If you can be really brief and concise, just overall.
Brief was a lot of discussion about how to survive COVID was, you know, some, some people had to retreat and some people had to, had to go into reflection time. And when they were really stressed out, some people had to put a language together to be able to share what their, their, their process was to regroup, if you will, so that they could have enough emotional energy to be present with others. And versus those who are reaching out for a sense of community on a much more meaningful, not meaningful, but deliberate way. So does that sum, right? You guys have anything else you want to add? Okay. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you so much, group two. And then all facilitators, please, you know, get those notes to us right away and, and we'll get that both to the task force and to the participants tonight. How about Sarah in group three?
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes. Uh oh, now you're gone.
Can you hear me again?
Yes.
Okay. I had a great conversation with our group. We were a small group of three people.
That was the one that I noticed a couple of people didn't join. I apologize for not boosting your numbers.
Yeah, well, thanks for trying. I'm going to pick one of the things that we talked about of the many things, but one, we were talking about COVID and how we reacted to it. You know, being thankful for working at home, for looking at it that way and probably that resilience had something to do with that, just really deciding that we're going to be more positive, maybe needing to regroup though when the stay at home first happened. And what a big, what a big thing that hope plays too. And also that COVID, that all of us, you know, it's a shared experience through really the entire world, but it's so personal to all of us. We all have our own personal story with COVID and relationship with it for many, many different reasons. And, and so anyway, it was a great group and thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you, group three. How about group four, Lynn?
Hi. We had a really good discussion as well. I think people were open and honest and shared quite a bit. It was, it's hard to pick what stood out, but we did talk about what, what can we do to help a community to build resilience? And some of the, you know, some of the ideas were just being nice to people. Making sure, you know, we talked a little bit about how we, you know, one of the factors might be having that stable adult in your life. And we kind of brainstormed that it, that's a big commitment, shouldn't fall all on teachers. But there are other people in the community that, that could, that could step into that space. So that's about it. It was great conversation and great presentations.
Excellent. Thank you Lynn. And how about group six, Rebecca?
Hi there. Our group actually seemed like we came from a lot of places of parenting and just how we've been dealing with what hope and resiliency looks like for our children. I think one of the fun notes that I took down was mostly that community resiliency. And just kind of speaking to the fact that many of the people that were in our group had, had been in groups before, in small group before too, in other past meetings. So it just showed that we individually as Grand Haven have, in, in, in the tri-city areas and this, this general facility definitely hone in on a great resiliency community. And I think we, we talked about how I think we, we have a great community to facilitate these needs and. And I think everybody's willing to see some change in a, in a progressive way. So we just want to thank the speakers. They were excellent and thank you for your time.
Fabulous, fabulous. Thank you, everybody. As I was saying with the next steps, the recording will be edited so that all of the blank spaces are there, and we'll get that out to you as well as all of the overheads. Some of the speakers sent materials, also links and PDFs, and we'll get all of that to everybody. The Q and A, the chat box, the remaining questions. I see Jenna has already sent to the speakers, so we'll get those responses, and we'll send that all out. And our goal is to, to do that within the week. And because there's no holiday, we should be able to do that easily by the end of the week. We also then will be reviewing all of the feedback at the Mental Illness Task Force. And we'll also provide that to Ottawa County Thrive to review. So thank you for being part of, of such an important community conversation and really a problem solving conversation. Huge thanks to Rick, Sarah, and Rebecca. All three of you did a remarkable job, such important information presented so well. And thank you for the materials, the slides and other materials that you sent. I know everybody will appreciate receiving that. And feel free to grab a reaction and throw a clapping hand or something in the, in your box if you know how to do that on Zoom. I know we all really want to express our appreciation. Appreciation to our sponsors as well, to Ottawa County, the city of Grand Haven, North Ottawa Community Health System, and Grand Haven Area Public Schools, as well as to the Mental Illness Task Force, the facilitators, and the facilitators from the Anti-Racism Task Force that jumped into this meeting to help when we were low on people. And so that's it for tonight. Again, I thank you for being here. Barbara from the Momentum Center. We're a grassroots movement to create a stigma free community. If we all keep working together, we will keep gaining momentum. So thank you again. Good night and namaste.